For the. And we hit the door. All right. Would you like to call up the order? The September 12th, 2023 Columbia Borough Council meeting. But I have a roll call, please.
Council President Zieg.
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Here.
Councilperson Stahl.
Here.
Councilperson Fisher. Here. Councilperson Price.
Here.
Councilperson Littner.
Here.
Councilperson Burkhart. Mayor Lutz.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Would anybody like to offer invocation? All right. If you'd like, please rise.
Stand down here. Good evening, everyone. I'd like for you to pray along with me as I pray. I will be praying for our families and also for this council because God is good. How many Christians do we have here? Oh, it's silence. Oh, wait. I'm in a gospel.
Amen.
All the time.
All right. I do it all the time. That's exactly right. I need to have some noise in this place so God will be clear to hear us. And the Bible tells us where two or more are, there he will be. So we want him to be in this place. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ah, now we're talking now. All right. Pray along with me silently, please, as we go before the throne of grace. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you today because you are God Almighty, that you seem fit to have us to be here at this appointed time. I ask that you bless those who didn't think it robbery to spend their time in this chamber to try to do the things that they need to do to help Columbia be successful. Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We ask that you go into each family's home, those their significant others, their children, heavenly Father, and touch them and give them peace so that those here will have a clear mind on the things that are at hand. We ask that heavenly Father that you would go ahead of them and bless them, heavenly Father. Remove those things that are not of you, God, those things that would trip us up, those things that would keep us from doing things the way we should. Remove those things, God, in the mighty name of Jesus. No anger, no wrath, no personal assignments, heavenly Father, no double-mindedness in this place, heavenly Father. Oh, God, touch us that our mind would be on the things that we need to do for this community of Columbia, that we would begin to change for the better, heavenly Father, that we would have equality, that we would raise rates and finances, heavenly Father. We need you, God. So be in this place today, God. Give us utterance and keep us together as one as we go through the list of things that need to be done. Bless each and every one on the panel. Bless each and every one that has something to say, God. Through the grace of God, may it grow us even the more, and we shall give you the glory, heavenly Father. And when we leave this place and go back to our homes, may there be peace there in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Joanne, please.
Space flag of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, for executive and probation session, if anyone? Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda here? I'm not aware of any.
Chris, did you want to add the power of the meeting tonight? Do you have an hour or was it been?
I would add now that the adjournment, we will be adjourning to executive session to discuss a personnel matter. I have a motion to approve the agenda. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it's a comment on agenda items only. The first item we have is Frank Dautrich.
Evening, folks. I will have to say it's an absolute pleasure, pleasure to drive 462. I don't know who the contractor was that did the job, but I didn't go that way because I knew they were working on it. But I'm telling you, the manholes, the meetings from the old laptop to the new, excellent. And I just, I just have to give them credit. Now, the only thing we got to do is wait a year or two and see the settlement of what's under it. We did flow will fill, which I guess the state didn't have to do in my project. Yes, so we'll see the fruits of that labor about a year or two. My other issue is I can't believe we don't have numbers on the market house. I say to myself, is the market house working? If it is, for who? I mean, I don't see no numbers whatsoever. You would think somebody would want to know what for money's coming in, what for money's going out. You have to get, you can't wait a year and not get no numbers on it.
It's inter-monthly finance reports.
It's inter-monthly finance reports?
Yeah.
I must have missed it because I looked for it, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, there's revenue line items and expense line items. I am not sure off the top of my head what numbers they are, but I will get that to you.
Well.
I'll give you those numbers.
I expected you to tell me that.
I know it's a one-something, but.
Yeah.
The next meeting, Frank, the 26th, will have the monthly report for finance.
And I can show you at that time.
See it the next time. We can highlight that for you so you can see where it is.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, how many standings we have, who's paying, who's not paying, where are we losing, or are we gaining? You know, I have no idea. I'm resident in town. If you say it's there, I'll relook at it. Okay, thank you on that. Mr. Kelly, that served a meeting. I remember him from when he was on council. And I have to say, I don't remember having any problems with the agenda like we have now. We never had to have a time limit thing. I can't remember once that I consulted that part of the meeting. But I look at the last meeting and I'd like to ask the chair and council, would you have the meetings printed, have the rules printed up? Maybe pass them out to these people so they know what the rules are. I don't think council knows.
Last week was a work session, which is different from the business meeting. The business meeting is meant to be go through the vote on things, take the action and be done. The work sessions are meant to be the back and forth conversation, the in-depth conversations on the individual items to do, to put the work in, to, you know, get them to where they're going to be an action item at a business meeting.
Where do you find the rules for that?
We have those rules.
We did a resolution.
We did a resolution. It's in a resolution.
But the actual agendas, Frank, I don't know if it's, I think some of that's in there, but the fact that the work session is different than a business meeting.
Well, that's just one issue.
Right, but there are the rules.
Was giving somebody five minutes and then giving somebody 18 minutes and for different, different one of the three meetings.
And I believe we came, I believe we came up with a solution to that last time, Frank, is that once the five minutes is done, we'll ask if anyone wants to let it continue. If they do, it continues for two more minutes.
Well, I must have missed that meeting. I heard there was, there was talk on that at the end of the one meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It's my fault. I missed it.
Yeah, I think you, I think you left early.
But, but you have the decorum deal. You spent money to have that, so they found, so the lawyer found that. But I still think it's for certain people. I look at last meetings. One of the, one of the people from the audience got up and they made some statements and then one of the elected officials just absolutely just ground him in the ground, which, which council all sit there and say one word. That's why I think you don't know the rules.
Unfortunately, that person made a personal attack and it was responded to.
In that manner?
Yes.
Oh, that was okay with the decorum in that manner, the way he responded.
Want to continue for two more minutes? Yes.
No, that's all right. Save that for somebody else. Thank you.
Minutes for approval. We have two sets, but I have a motion to approve Borough Council meeting minutes for August 8th, 2023. I have a motion by Councilperson Price, second by Councilperson Stahl to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for August 8th, 2023. Questions, comments, concerns? No? In that case, I have a motion by Councilperson Price, second by Councilperson Stahl to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for August 8th, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for August 22nd, 2023? A motion by Councilperson Price, second by Councilperson Stahl to approve the Borough Council meeting minutes for August 22nd, 2023. Questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. Page two of those minutes at the bottom. It says that I asked for clarification on the 565 requirement. Now, maybe that was 565. I, I don't remember ever asking about 565 requirement. So I was a little confused what that actually meant. Maybe it was across of it, but I don't remember asking that either, but.
Under council comments?
Yes.
Yes, down to.
The very bottom of page two.
I mean, I know I asked a couple of questions about it. I, I was a little baffled by what the 565 requirement was.
I'm not sure. We can go back and look at it. We can bring it back in the meeting.
That's fine. I just.
Do we want to approve them as is, or?
I would just wait until we can clarify that, then you can approve those minutes at your, your next meeting.
All right, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Do I now change that to a table?
Yes.
All right.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
This is a work session or a business session?
Business meeting.
Mr. Dautrich's point, I see his name in this, in these minutes four different times, three of them during discussion, ones that were only to involve council. I do believe that we were, we do run a good, fair meeting and when comments need to be made by the public, when it's by, by rules, not appropriate. I believe Borough Council President offers that and is very generous. And I appreciate Mr. Dautrich's comments as well, so.
Councilperson Price, Councilperson Stahl, can we change your motion to a table of this? Sorry, we have a motion by Councilperson Price, second by Councilperson Stahl to table the Borough Council meeting minutes for August 22nd, 2023 until the meeting on September 26th to provide clarification on page two. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports. Community development.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the zoning and planning report for August 2023. And I'd also like to acknowledge the receipt of the public market house report for August 23rd. I think you want to say Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to go. Two minutes, please.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Maybe short, please.
It's a business meeting.
Thank you, council. The number I gave you for future book private events went up to 28 currently. And I still have eight pending. I actually have people playing over days now, which is a good thing to see. I'm trying to accommodate everybody I can. I had two people come in on Saturday for November 5th. So I worked it out. One's taking the 5th and one's taking the 12th. And then I had one yesterday that wanted the 5th, and I gave them 4th. So I actually accommodate as much as I can for these people coming in. And it's getting really heavy with traffic, which is a good thing to see. Heather made a point on Saturday about some of the vendors not coming in. I know there's a lot of them in sickness and things like that, vacations and stuff. So they are getting, coming in in time, 9:00, 10:00, you know. Make sure that they get in there earlier and get everything prepped and get ready for their day. But I did receive a great email yesterday from the Philadelphia Business Journal. Little event here, have the market house in October 26th. I'll be speaking with the girls who's coordinating this. But this is going to be all about business, tourism, real estate, everything like that in Lancaster County. Some of the people who will be attending this for this big forum will be Lancaster Mayor Saras, P A Restaurant and Lodging Association's CEO, Joe Massaro, Discover Lancaster CEO, Ed Harris, Dutch Wonderland GM, James Pauling. These are just to name a few of some of these big dignitaries in our county that will be coming over here for this luncheon and forum, which I think is pretty big for us. So this is a great thing. So I'll be speaking with her Thursday afternoon to settle everything. But it's a good thing for Columbia to see these people coming in, want to come in Columbia and actually use our facilities for future events. So that is huge. I thought that was a big hit for us, for Columbia. And hopefully we have some people there to maybe poke some holes in them and push for us and push for more of the dollars coming in for this. So that would be, so. Any questions or anything? Okay, thank you.
Next, Public Works and Property. Councilperson Stahl.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the Public Works and Property Report for August 2023. And would just like to highlight the Storm Green Inlet Painting. Boy Scout member Derek Kinter painted and scencled some Storm Green Inlets around the downtown area, so it's named Eagle Scout Rank. So thanks to him keeping our Storm Greens highlighted and clean. They look really good. Good.
And safety, and we're actually going to change this title from safety slash communications to safety slash marketing to better encapsulate what it actually is. So Councilperson Burkhart.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge receipt of the Public Safe Reports for August 23, 2023. Be advised that Columbia Borough Police Department Report is forthcoming. Penn State Health Lifeline and Columbia Borough Fire Department Reports are included as well as the Codes Compliance Report and the E M O C Report for August 2023. I would just like to comment on the abbreviated reports. You know, all these years I've been managing and presenting these reports, acknowledging them. It was a wealth of information, not knowing exactly what they are going to be required of. I do think that council's contribution and feedback on what may be relevant and what may be trimmed. I do like the shorter reports and I appreciate our emergency management teams providing. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. It's more efficient for everyone, I believe.
I have nothing with marketing. You are having a marketing meeting here. I'm not sure what's going to happen.
Presentations. I don't think we have any of those. Mayor Lutz, Chief Bromer.
Okay, just two quick things. Chief Bromer and I were talking a little bit today, today about basically some upcoming things that will affect the budget preparation for, for next year. And I, I just wanted to draw your attention to, one, you may, you may see this in your, in your monthly reports, the, the change that y'all made last year to increase the fine, the fee for, for street sweeping fines really had no impact on, on the number. And that tells us that going from $10 to $20, it really didn't mean anything to people. Those people who don't move just aren't going to move. And it costs us money to go around and pay the tickets and everything. I, I think that was a good move by council and justified. And I tell you, you should look at retaining that in next year's budget preparation. And along with that, I saw that over the past several months, Mark, you may have seen this too. I'm sure I know the chief has. The numbers on the parking mobile, Park Mobile has been steadily climbing. People are starting to get it and use it. And, and you know, that's really good because I would say there probably are very few people using Park Mobile that wind up getting a parking ticket. And that, and that's a good thing. So I see that gone. I believe that was a good move. It's gone the right way. And thank you all for putting that program in. That's all. Chief, you have anything?
Next, we have our action items. Could I have a motion to authorize staff to pay the bills? A motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Price to authorize staff to pay the bills. Questions, comments, concerns? I didn't have anything that I stood out to me. All right, see none. I have a motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Price to authorize staff to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to authorize staff to advertise ordinance 941 to amend the Borough's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 186, Streets and Sidewalks by adding a new Article 7 Sidewalk Cafe?
Seven.
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Stahl, second by Councilperson Price to authorize staff to advertise ordinance number 941. Questions, comments, concerns? This is the one we looked at last week and.
The more I thought about it, I'm kind of opposed to having seating only. Some of our sidewalks are smaller than other sidewalks and by forcing to have table seats, it, it can eliminate some of the places. Maybe not today, but in the future. And I honestly, I kind of like the bar standing type atmosphere. Where you know, you had a, you stick out two feet or whatever, still give you space, but you put a railing up and a slat of bar, people would stand out there and talk. I just, I like that concept and I hate to see us ban it through this ordinance.
Eric, I tend to agree with you and I would offer a friendly opinion. I see so many places where they're using the small round tables and people just stand there, which is basically the same thing. You want to have a, a bar per se, but you would have small tables that probably take up half the diameter of one, a table and chair instead of chairs does.
Right, okay, I know over in Riceville Bridgeside. Bridgeside?
Yeah.
Burne Bridge.
Right.
They have a rail and you just have a platform, well, not rail, and people just come out to smoke and drink and talk and just stand there and have a ledge for a beer or a nice tray or whatever. I kind of like that concept. And like I said, we're fortunate that nobody's really tried that yet. We're on a smaller sidewalk street that has a cafe that can open up. But I don't want to eliminate people with it. I'm just asking if it would be possible for us to.
If possible, for sure. I, that's, I'll be honest, that was the one requirement in this that, oh yeah, I hadn't seen before in a sidewalk cafe like ordinance. You know, so it's certainly, if you want to make a motion to.
We have, we have the distance required by sidewalks that protect us as far as they're being required. So I just, I know the mayor, he did have a concern about passing on stuff, but I just.
Well, and I think what you're talking about, Eric, and what I'm hearing, it's impressive that to agree. Any conscious business owner who doesn't have that eight-foot sidewalk or more would look and say, I have to have room for my, for my customers to pay at my. So I'm going to have to cut this down. Therefore, I'm going to have to have people standing. I think it works out both ways.
Are we concerned at all about occupancy then? Because the whole thing with the seating, it was, the occupancy limit was then based on the number of seats.
Oh, no, I don't think that has to change.
But how, how can you set occupancy if there's new seats?
There is no, there's no additional occupancy.
Then, then there's no occupancy limit.
No, people have a choice to get up from the bar or get up from the table and to outside stand.
Yeah, you would still have the fire code occupancy limit. You just wouldn't, and I don't know exactly how the fire code works because it may be based on square footage where if you add, I don't know, let's say 30 square feet just as an around number, you might be able to add an additional 10 or so people to your occupancy, whether they're sitting or standing or anything like that. There are people that know that far better than I do, but I think that's how you kind of look at that.
Yeah. Good. That's a real good point, Evan, and, and I know it goes by square footies. Chris, I don't know if you got into that or not with occupancy. Square footage in occupancy for the market house, well, all businesses have that.
Right.
That should be figured out and maybe put in the ordinance that that an occupancy permit or limit is required.
I didn't think we were allowing. I didn't think we were giving them, quote unquote, more space by using the sidewalk. I thought the sidewalk was a feature.
My understanding of that section was it, it limited the number of people who were outside, not the total occupancy of the building. It kept people from crowding out there. But to be honest, Eric, I, if we want to make that change, it's one of those that I say, let's put it in place and if we start seeing problems, we can make some changes to it. But I, I think to encourage people to be outside, get that streetscape feel of walking down the street and people are outside enjoying meal and talking. I think it creates a nice vibe downtown that we want to create here. I don't, I don't have a big problem in the way with those tables or a stand-up counter. It, to me, it's just getting people outside so they can go with their fresh air.
What happens with a midnight shop next door with the same frontage sidewalk? It says, I want a good tables and merchandise out on the sidewalk. Does this apply to them as well? And is that a?
It doesn't right now. This only applies to, to food service. Because on sitting outside, it's not extending all commercial spaces outside.
Will it come to that at some point?
If council wants to look at that and extend it out, it can.
I mean, honestly, I'm okay with that. As long, as long as we can, we can get parts of it.
I just don't want to have, have a big stake raised, you know, in a year or so when the midnight shop wants the same, you know. So opportunity has.
Would that be a separate?
The street is.
So that would have to be a separate ordinance?
Yeah, we, we could look at that as a separate ordinance. This is specifically written for restaurants to have outdoor space.
Years ago, at certain times of the year.
They had sidewalk.
They had sidewalk sales.
Right.
Because he made it look Saturday, Friday and Saturday, it was sidewalk sales. Emergency Association set it up and he was permitted.
Right.
So would I, I, and I know you want to advertise this, I say, I hate to do this. Could I add a minute to it now?
If you wanted to do that, that's fine. I'm wondering if, given that change, if maybe we should just.
Bring it back.
Bring it back at the second meeting and, you know, at, what is that, the 26th?
I'll say.
Yes.
If that's, you know.
To advertise.
Just clarify that, look at it again on the 26th and then get it up.
There's a couple of different places it matches it in.
Yes. Yeah, so we want to do it, I'd rather do it right and wait two weeks than try to rush this through because we really would, in order to get it in for, in time for the 26th meeting, we pretty much have to send it in LMD tomorrow or Thursday. So it's, I want to make sure that we get it.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay.
So you did have a...
I did have a motion and a second, so...
We can table that.
We can table that. We're going to change it to a table. I have a motion by councilperson Stahl, a second by councilperson Price to table the item to authorize staff to ordinance, to advertise ordinance 941. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Bring that back on the 26th and for the authorization. Next, could I have a motion to authorize staff to advertise ordinance to amend chapter 207 to update regulations related to handicap parking? And a second. I have a motion by councilperson Linder, second by councilperson Vergard to authorize staff to advertise ordinance to amend chapter 207, to amend chapter 207. Questions, comments, concerns? I think this one is going to be straightforward.
I agree.
I see your show.
I'm against it. I'm not against advertising.
I'm sorry, whoever has their phone that keeps ringing, would you please put that on silent?
So do I, that sounds stupid. Do I go against, do I go in favor of advertising it? I'm not in favor of it.
Absolutely, you're, and that is absolutely fine. Jill, the opportunity to vote against it if you like it.
This is just to advertise it to have a hearing or whatever.
Just wanted to be clear.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Questions from the public, concerns from the public? All right. I have a motion by councilperson Linder, second by councilperson Vergard to authorize staff to advertise the ordinance to amend chapter 207 to update regulations related to handicap parking. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, we have an item to consider parameters on the use of a PR firm. I'm going to let councilperson Vergard take it away. My apologies, last week, discussion went in a, in a different way than it, than it was meant to. So we're going to let councilperson Vergard present what he was going to talk about last week.
Thank you. I know some were shocked to see that this was coming up again and I'm grateful that you're all indulging me here. And I will confess, I, I own this. I went on vacation last week and this wasn't the agenda. I knew I could have it taken off, so. Yeah, so, you know, it was clear to me that the intent of this discussion probably wasn't very clear. So I decided I'm going to do this now. We're going to try to keep this under five minutes and I'm going to go through this quick presentation and we can talk about, you know, what we should or should not do or consider afterwards. So, Mark, go ahead and start with page one, three actually. So this is what this discussion is not about. Communications between departments. Example, police department and the borough side. Communications between borough staff and council. An example is borough manager and council president. Communications to residents. Example, emergency incident in newer areas such as what happened down here in the shooting. Shots fired, I should say. Communications to announce community events, thunder on the river and other things that are going on in the borough. Communications with local media that can be handled internally. Example, LMP calls regarding a council decision or some other incident in the borough that certainly mayor, chief, council president, Mark can handle. Or committing to an ongoing retainer agreement with a public relations firm because it is not needed. We all recognize that a long-term retainer with a PR firm is not needed. Mark, can you hear the next slide, please? What this discussion is about, crisis management communications that are beyond our expertise. Having a vetted crisis management public relations partner if and when one is needed. Communications council if and when we have complicated issues such as Flint water crisis in Flint, Michigan. Could happen here, don't say it can't. Communications council if or when an emergency event occurs. Example, trade run in Palestine, Ohio. Communications council if and when we draw national interest. Hey, I was here, I was there for this. 2005 double murder kidnapping incident in Lexington, PA. So it was make them roach. Remember that clearly. Outlining a protocol that allows Columbia Boroughs to engage the approved public relations partner if and when needed. Mark, can you hear the next slide? So I'm in the marketing industry. I've handled PR myself, not crisis management. I've worked with other public relations agencies in all spheres. So to check off the box whom I believe we should consider, those firms to consider. I consider, hey, are you, are you experts and do you have experience in issues and crisis management? Number one. Deep media relations for the expedience and better acceptance of releases. A good PR firm will have good relationships with media outlets and contacts at the ready and a good reputation that when a release goes out, it gets picked up and published. More than two decades of experience. You know, what newbies will this? If it's a big event, you need experience. Specialized in government public relations. It's a totally different animal than, you know, private sector. Can offer priority attention to crisis matters. And I've had conversations with these folks and they've all said, yes, without a retainer, we will give you, we will give you priority if it's a crisis situation. And this is important as well, can provide analytics to gauge the effectiveness of the engagement. Mark, can you hear the next slide? There were, my research, I, I came down to three qualified agency options. I took screenshots from their paperwork, from what they provided me, and I just included a picture of it and highlighted the number that you should be concerned about. The websites to all these firms are included up there. If you want to pick one or talk about one in discussion, feel free. First one is Gavin, with whom we have experience with. Now, what we want to talk about is the senior media, senior media relations man. That's the person who's going to manage what gets written, why it gets written, how it gets written, and where it gets distributed. Their rate for that service is $205 an hour. PR Works is in Harrisburg. Same role, their rate is $165 an hour. Faria Rubel in New Jersey, highly qualified PR agency, $650 an hour. And you've got to be on a 25-hour, 25-hour retainer for the year with them engaged. $650 an hour. So when you look at the rate of our past PR agency that we've engaged, 205 is not unreasonable. You want to hear the next slide, Mark? Now, you say, but Todd, we already, we used Gavin and we had a retainer contract with them and we don't know what happened and we, we can't really determine what the value is. And I would have to agree with you. I would say, you're right, perhaps that's a good thing. Let me give you an analogy. You're all familiar with Maple and Fifth, right? Jack, historically, how many accidents happened at Fifth and Maple in the past couple of decades?
When averaged annually? I'd say anywhere between 10 and 15.
10 to 15 a year. Now, council made the wise decision of putting a four-way stop sign at Fifth and Maple. How many accidents have we had in the last year since we made that decision?
We're averaging probably one or two.
One or two. Now, the next question is this, Jack, how many lives were saved because we put a four-way stop at Fifth and Maple?
It's difficult to even...
Exactly. That's the value of a PR agency. You may never understand or know the value. It's the fires that didn't occur that a PR agency helps you work through. I brought up the Palestinians to somebody and not in fairness, they said, yeah, but their staff handled the press releases. They were, they were in front of the press. They were all together, standing there. I'm like, yeah, sure, I bet y'all had their hands folded like this, right? All in a line, in order of importance. And I guarantee a PR agency that they relied on, told them to stand there and told them exactly what to say and what not to say. They had help. So the whole point of this discussion was simply this, the time of an emergency, whatever that emergency is, we can all debate whether the incident that Gavin was called in last time was justified or not. That's water under the bridge. I'm talking about the next incident that is, that is critical that we have help, that we have somebody set aside that knows us and agrees to step in and help us. And we know what the expectations are and they know what the expectations are. And we can all decide tonight if you want, what does it take to engage that company? Is it a quorum of council? Is it an emergency executive session where we all need to get together, talk about it and give borough manager permission to call the agency? That's all this discussion was supposed to be about last week and I'm sorry I wasn't here to help guide that a little better. I feel like it got a little muddled because there is another very important communications discussion that takes place, that needs to take place. And it's being worked on right now, Jack and I, Jack, we're doing today, actually. And that's how does our communications within the borough between us, departments, staff and the public? How does that take place and what are the protocols or rules for that? This is something completely different. So does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I do, of course. Obviously, I said in the past, I'm opposed to a PR firm.
I'm sorry?
I'm opposed to us having a PR firm, I said in the past.
Correct.
And at this very moment, I'm not as opposed to like a one-time use, like you're saying, in, in an emergency situation, a true emergency. However, I don't think that it's fair for us to go back to Gavin when earlier this year, I believe it was at the March 28th meeting, Mark and Heather both agreed as well as I did that if we needed to look at this again, it would be a different firm. And that's why I was surprised to see this information back in this packet. Because I think obviously there's other people out there. I'm sure we don't want $650 an hour, but...
I would agree.
I mean, I'm sure there's, I appreciate that you had three for us to look at tonight, but, you know, I'm just sure there's others that we could enlist if we had to. That's kind of where I'm at right now. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm adamantly opposed to it, but I am adamantly opposed to us going back to this one again. But I guess that's all I can say.
I've included Gavin again because they know us, they've worked with us a couple different times. And I know that Gavin is considered the top municipal government PR agency in the area. They're very adept, they're good. I'm not really sure if I understand the reasons why council decided not to go back to Gavin. I don't recall, I didn't look at the minutes. But you know...
There was inaccuracies.
Inaccuracies in what?
In the stuff that they published.
I'm good with this. In the stuff they published that went out to the public?
Not every time.
Reports that they gave us?
Not every time, to be clear, not every time.
Not every time, but there were inaccuracies.
Were they addressed?
I don't know.
There are...
No, I'm sorry.
I think they were, but I do like...
There are a lot of PR agencies out there, a lot of marketing agencies. If you go to every single one of their websites, I'm going to tell you they're the best. So as I said earlier, I went through the criteria that I set, experience in this, this, this expertise with the level of connections and their ability to handle our kind of crisis. I'm happy to continue looking. As long as we, as long as we have somebody set up that's a good firm, because this is what I really want to avoid. What happened the last time we called Gavin? That's what I'm trying to avoid, is the public be upset, council be upset and... Because we may need it. And I want to have that in place. What's that?
I'm sorry. Would you not agree though, that basic information in a press release, like names and dates, it's absolutely critical to have those things correct?
I agree.
I'm repaying for accuracy.
I don't, I don't know incidents or what information you're talking about. I don't know what was incorrect and I don't know how it was rectified or how it was dubbed. I don't know any of that, so.
I think the, the, the second half of this needs to be not just deciding on who, but we absolutely need the set of parameters as to when someone would be brought in.
And I think it starts really with a quorum of council. Council approval to go ahead and engage.
But I, I think we need the guidelines set forth because if there is a crisis, the last thing I want is Mark to have to call around and try and get a quorum of council because there's seven of us doing, with seven different lives, doing seven different things.
So I disagree with you. If we have, if we have a PR firm that, and I already talked briefly talked about it, and there's an emergency, it's going to first come back on Mark or emergency 911. But the campaign of a PR firm, is it going to happen in the first 20 minutes of that emergency? There's no reason why we can't set up an executive meeting like Zoom or whatever.
I agree with you. That's very true.
And say, go for it. Because in, in chief's mind, it may be this big. In our mind, it may seem, no, it's only this big and we're going to keep it local. But I think before he's done the money...
I just have concerns about the sunshine act with that. There's really not...
There's not an exception for that.
Just emergencies where you can just convene. So you'd have to call a special meeting, which would take you at least 24 hours after you advertise it, two probably, three or four days at the least. Yeah.
So let's say it's the Palestine train, train. Is a sunshine violation the worst thing to worry about that time?
But I guess my question would be...
When we each individually get fined, yeah, it is.
I mean, do you, you have a manager and a police chief. This is not a borough where you only have a secretary, right? Like a lot of smaller boroughs. Do you trust them to make, you know, you've authorized at least, Mark, to spend up to $10,000 without council approval?
Right.
You know, it seems like, you know...
And that's a fair point. I mean, as long as we've given the guidelines and it checks it and we say, is it this, is it this, is it this? Go ahead.
I think you're, I think you need to trust the professionals that you have working for you. And, and I think this is really necessary. I look at a different scenario. God forbid this happens, but we were, we're looking at major rehabilitation of the Franklin Memorial Bridge and major traffic changes on Route 30. And there was this one the other day, Saturday or Sunday, shut things down for a while.
Saturday.
For Columbia Bridge Act.
Saturday.
For a while. People, our people, our local residents, even those from surrounding areas, PENDO will put out a press release. That's not going to satisfy our people. We need to come out with some professional information, whether by your manager or your chief of police or both, that is done by a professional firm to, to answer the questions and ease the minds of your local residents of whatever happened going on happening. Now, I'm just using something with the bridge because I, I, that's on my mind every day. But I, I, I think that's a good way to... But I think that's a good way to go about it. And let your manager, your chief make the call.
That is right. But I think we already said that it has to be bigger than that. This is more like a chemical train wreck spill where national media is coming in and everything else. Not so much.
I'm not, I didn't want to define what may happen out there, but it could be something that's
I mean, no, if it's a catastrophic, like 95 collapse, then obviously, that's a little bit different.
But I guess, I guess my point is maybe what Gavin was using before wasn't satisfied for council, some council. So therefore, they want to set the expectation that if we use a PR firm, it has to be pretty catastrophic. And that national basis goes harder to find.
There's nothing to say that, and I think that's going to be very difficult because you can't possibly think of the universe of all the things that could possibly happen. But you know, there's nothing to say that in that policy, whatever that is, that you can say borough council shall convene a, you know, a special meeting as soon as as possible to evaluate, you know, not only to evaluate the event, but evaluate the use of the PR firm so you don't get too far out of control with costs if it's not something that you want to do.
So that brings me back to, you said what, about 24 hours to?
You have to, you can, you have to advertise a special meeting at least 24 hours in advance. And right now, just as an example, in LMP, you have to, you have to, the advertisement has to be in about a day and a half to two days prior to it actually appearing in the paper.
So we're looking at four days?
Yeah.
So, and at that point, you've
There's no, yeah.
There's no point. At that point, you've lost the impact.
I looked at two things in my time around here that I would possibly consider that really affected the residents. One, obviously, was COVID. There was a lot of talk and a lot of mistrust, misunderstanding and everything else where the borough could have come out with the use of a professional outfit to lay the facts out to the people and try to put them in ease that, you know, what was going to happen, what was going on, what to do. And the other one, chief, you were here, but I don't think anybody else here was there. The Januarak scare. That, when I walked in here that day, I was totally berserk. And it took, it would have taken some professionals to calm down. And a PR agency to help you just talk globally within your community?
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be dealing with news agency, right?
No.
Wouldn't it be possible to appoint one council member that we all appointed and when something like that would come up, if we pick between Mark and that council member, and that council member would represent all of us in the decision?
No, I don't agree with that.
Don't make me work in council.
What point are you at?
Well, it's not, but reality is, you know, I don't want to make decisions for council. It's going to be here another year or another four years or anything like that in that aspect.
Is, is to Eric's point, or a question I have is about advertising a meeting, does it have to be a newspaper?
It does.
Yeah.
Yes.
A newspaper for general circulation.
At least for now. I don't know how long that's going to last, but
It's our choices or Central Memphis Journal and LMP.
I don't know. What in the future? I could see something like Text My Gov. Or where you have at least a majority of citizens connected to that you didn't.
I think at some point you're going to see somewhere you can put it on, for instance, your social media, your website. You know, I think that's coming at some point in time, but.
So hold on a second. I thought we could have an executive session without
There's only certain reasons that you could have a meeting session. And just a general, there's an emergency.
So let's say there's a mass murder, living long, you kill people, I mean that.
That was not an executive, that could be an emergency meeting, but that has to be
Add that.
Public meeting to discuss this person right around.
Then you have to have a public meeting to discuss whether or not we can bring on the PR firm to get ahead of the story and not talk about details.
So the mass murderer knows where to find us all in one place.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, that does seem right.
I don't think that's a big deal.
I think one of the issues in emergency management, be whatever the issue is, is you want to be able to get out in front of the message as early as possible and make sure that your controlling information is being disseminated.
I agree 100%.
And I think that's rare. If we had a firm on mall, I'll say instead of all container, and we had parameters in which, I'll say, Jack and I can engage that firm, then I'd feel comfortable at least beginning to set it up and getting that process started as soon as possible and making sure council is aware of what we're doing and how it's going. Because you don't want to wait, you don't want to delay time because in today's communication world, delay just creates confusion. I think the sooner we get out in front of something, the sooner that we are the face of the incident, the better we are at controlling the message.
We have meetings three times a month, right? So the likelihood of a meeting being right around the corner from an incident, where we can all be together to talk about it, add it to the agenda if we have to, I think is maybe a fail-safe to put the brakes on, giving manager and police chief the ability to make the decision, hiring a PR agency, making this right around the corner. We can talk about it and halt it or keep it going if we have to, or advertise for a special meeting and it's still going to be two or three days.
But yeah, I mean, we, we hire people to make these decisions, so, you know, I think, and you know, we appointed Jay to be emergency management coordinator. I think we have to listen to, we have to trust that they're doing the right thing. And like you said, a meeting's right around the corner unless it's one of those five Tuesday meetings.
I don't think it's a matter of trusting, trusting the people that we have here. I think what happened the last time was, to my surprise anyway, that I saw it listed in our checks. And I had no idea that we were going to use them again after we had voted the way we did. I was misled by that somehow. And and that was, you know, why I questioned that expenditure because it just didn't seem right to me.
So that, I mean, I think that goes into the other part of the communication. There's a communication within
Which is another topic.
Which is a whole other discussion topic.
It'll be hard.
Right, but I'm saying if we were to engage a PR firm again and we all agreed on who that was and no one put it on the table that we weren't going to use them anymore and then find out we use, I mean, that whole thing was
Yeah, I understand that. I'm happy to live at other agencies. Listen, here's what I do, what I do. Spend an inordinate amount of time interviewing, setting up interviews, meeting people, research, digging through all the numbers, just to have council say, no, we're not interested. If you're interested in none of these three, these three don't cut the mustard, I'm happy to go find another sandwich. But it doesn't make any sense, I know. Or I'll put another bottle. Or get another knife. Anyway, I'm happy to do more research if you want me to.
I'd be willing to look at more. I mean, I would be willing to look at more and discuss more.
How about if I come back to the next work session with three more options? I'll give us six to talk about. I'll include links to their websites if we want to careers, dig deep, dig shallow, not dig at all. That's up to you.
Put it in the packet so we can look the weekend before. That'd be fine. All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I realize I forgot that.
The example that was used to show that we need a firm was you use Clifton Maple before, I guess we used a firm on it and afterwards. Do you have any kind of verification on these accidents and on how many lives we would have saved? Why would you not have that for council so they can verify that? Anybody can say anything.
I understand your question. Frank, that was an analogy of how, how it's impossible to determine how many lives, how many lives were not lost to a World War III that never happened. That's what, that was the analogy, was simply an analogy to help, help understand that the value of a PR agency, if done well and done right, you may never have any fires or other big conversations or emergencies you have to deal with. If it's done well, all that is avoided. And almost, somebody once said this, what is it? It's a, it's a, like a law, like a Murphy's Law, not Kelly Murphy's Law, but a Murphy's Law. Something like this, if it looks hard, it wasn't. If it looks easy, it was absolutely difficult. So when the PR agency engages and everything looks like it went well, it was very hard.
I understand what you're saying, but it can sway people the way that it was brought out. Are you voting on that tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And Frank, here, I wanted to give you this in case you were leaving early again tonight. That's the line item that was. No, it's the line item where the market process, expenses and revenue are.
It's a bill.
All right.
Looks like a check.
No, I just ripped off the bottom of a scratch paper. All right. Introduction of new business. Consider request from the Merchants Association for free parking on Saturdays between November 25th and February 17th. We had, we've done this in the past. This is early. I think the last, at least last year, I think we did it, we only did till the beginning of January. We didn't do till
I thought we did it 14.
President Zink? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Would you come to the market room and get your name printed, please?
Yes, yes, of course, yes. This doesn't count as a department, is it?
No, because agenda items was three.
Okay. I just want to interrupt you now. I don't know if it was miscommunicated. Oh, my name, Rebecca Murphy. I live at 825 Monast Street here in Columbia. We were requesting for October instead of November. We wanted the story in October, which is our big business kickoff for small business.
The email we got said 11/25 through 2/17.
And who did you get that from?
From Dawn.
Dawn.
I think it was, made a mistake. When I asked about the Daisy, just before I came here, it was October. We were going to have a request through February.
We have a special fee if you want to change the date of a free parking Saturday. There's an additional fee for that.
I'm good with that. That's it. That's why I just wanted to mention before.
So what was the date in October that I began?
Well, we wanted to be able to bag the meters beginning in October, just on Saturdays and run through.
So the first Saturday of October, we start?
Yes, yes.
October 7th is the first Saturday?
So this is at my time. I'm going to go sit. That's all I wanted to do and then we're done.
We normally do small business Saturday for Valentine's Day.
No, last year we
I think we did it through January.
We did it through January last year.
It wasn't Valentine.
We
I was going to stay there.
Through January, through, till January.
Yeah, we did. You're right, you did. What happened last year, to my understanding and Peggy's understanding, again, Rebecca Murphy, 251st Street, Columbia.
Peggy Dunn, 26 South Second Street, Columbia. Thank you.
It's been a long day for everyone. So we wanted to, last year, to what we were informed, that we kind of missed the cutoff to request for February because of our Valentine kickoff for our signs that we put around, which does bring a lot of people into town.
Well, I think you missed the cutoff for the Valentine thing, but not the free parking. We had, we had done that before it was even requested last year because I had got only agenda.
So we just missed to be able to install the Valentines and President Zink, okay. But the free parking was extended to February, is that right?
No, it was not. It was just between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Well, Thanksgiving and the New Year.
And the New Year, okay. We were hoping to extend it to, but we understand if you can't.
I think prior to COVID, we did that. We did go to Valentine's Day. And then COVID happened and we pretty much, oh, no.
Well, COVID was our first year in office, so the first year we did do it to February, but that was because pretty much we were not doing any of that for that whole year. We did one year till February and then the next year we did just to January.
Can I say something? Okay. Go ahead, Peggy. Did you want to talk first?
Go ahead.
Peggy and I are like a duo. When you see us walking around town, they call us actually the modern street walkers because we get around town all the time knocking on doors and really getting to know these business people that we want them to come to town. So we have just a kickoff. So January, we do what we call Wine About Nature. It's bringing a lot of people, it's growing. February, we do that chocolate walk with the Valentines, which has brought in about 200 people last year. March, we have our Gala's 50th, Soft Cup. April, it's all about, I'm just letting you guys know so maybe, you know, we're going to, you won't miss like one of those wonderful Fourth Brighes that we do have. It's all about spring spotlight on our local decor and antiques. And vendors at the Market House Friday on Saturday. Thank you, Chris. You set up an amazing job for that. May, honoring our local heroes. June, we have our River Fest Weekend, live music, guest speakers and tours. July, we have our Summer in the Streets Carnival. It's a carnival theme time. August, end of the summer blowout. And September, we do the Sippin' Festival. So we're doing a lot and we just want to thank you as a council for partnering with the Merchants Association and being a part of the Merchants Association. It's really great to see your faces out and about. Last year, I just want to do a shout out, can I do this really quick? A shout out, we have to shout out. We have to shout out to Eric Kaufman, President Zink, Borough Councilman. Do you guys still go by councilman or councilperson? Oh, come on. So Eric
Yes.
Heather, when we just look at some familiar faces. Leo Lutz, thank you. He comes to every ribbon cutting ceremony. We do ribbon cutting ceremonies in the fourth, every fourth Friday. And people think, the business owners think that he is like the Pope, like the Catholic Pope when he's coming because they are just so wonderfully happy to see the mayor, to see a councilperson, to see our president, Zink. It's just been overwhelming. And I want to thank you also, Jack Farmer. We want to thank you from the Merchants Association because you're a great partner with our schools, with our community, and you're a big part of the Merchants Association in working with children. We had a table out front last Fourth Friday. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions?
Bring that up.
Who's going to do this?
Who's going to do what?
Bagneeter.
Bagneeter.
That is what we're discussing. So last year, Mr. President, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Murphy had his crew, put them on and take them off. So that is what is going to happen if, to make it happen. So that is what is gonna happen if, to make it happen.
Have we gotten anything other than the red bags? Have we gotten anything other than those red bags?
But they were kind of, weren't they?
Well, yeah, but the problem is I see people pull up and then they pull away because you can't see on it that it says free parking and everyone assumes that red bags mean you can't park there. So I see lots of people pull up and they're like, oh, it's a red bag, I can't park there. And they.
Didn't it say Mary Christmas?
Yeah, but it's not really, you can't really read it, you know? So people pull away.
Did you supply this, Mark?
No.
No, we didn't get it last year. We talked about getting something different, even like getting red and green in every other one or something, so it looks like it's not just a prohibition.
Okay, yeah. Well, what are you suggesting, what do you think?
I don't know.
We're open to suggestions.
I was thinking we were just doing the signage again because when people were using, when people were using Park Mobile, it will not even let them pay for a meter. Because we put in Park Mobile that it's free parking. So if they try and go into Park Mobile, they can't even pay for a meter because it says, you know, it's free parking. So it's really new and only people that are doing it are the ones that are actually plugging the meter with a quarter, you know? So a sign would be fine, but.
Just the sign on the meter, is that what you're saying?
If they're coming to town and they're going to use the parking spot, their intent is to use the parking spot. Why not just put something over the face where you, they're gonna use the spot anyway. Why isn't it gonna be free parking when you see it from the street? The place you need to see it from is the coin slot. Put something over the coin slot, free parking, that's simple, right?
Right, and then just remove it a month after.
These signs were actually very effective last year. We had many issues with the bags. We were chasing bags all over the borough. Yes, so it certainly were.
I thought the signs were much better last year.
Yes, yes. And the bags, to your point, I think, sort of give the message to people that it's no parking.
All right, okay, that's interesting and that's.
As a different, as a different color, it may have worked, but not right.
So maybe just here a sign on the meter, that's what you're saying?
That's correct.
That would work better? And then we just take that off after.
That is correct, yes.
You could even, you could even tailor your signs or have your signs pretty like Thanksgiving, Christmas, Valentine's.
Advertize merch association.
Or advertise. I mean, that's for you guys to decide.
Yes, okay.
So no bags. Cause we're not getting money for it.
So just so we're sure, no bags, just a sign of some sort. One is out.
And last year we did from November.
I was just wondering if you do have your permission to change that from November to October? And then in January, it would be nice to have January, but if you prefer that we don't, we'd rather have October.
I thought you were talking about October to.
Saturday.
To February 17th. I thought the end date was correct, the beginning date was wrong.
Yes, yes, till February, yes, that's the end date that we were requesting.
Any thoughts, comments, concerns from council?
I think it works well, yeah, it's good, it's good for business, it's good for the downtown.
My only concern remains that we have a lot of rental units in the downtown area and free parking on Saturday could lead, potentially, to residents parking on the street, free on Saturdays versus actually keeping spaces open for guests coming in and wanting to shop. So that still remains my only concern with this. I think extending during the holiday season makes sense. Going into February, I think it just creates a longer time where we're gonna have people just parking there. And it's gonna take, actually take away parking from the businesses downtown.
And that's my concern with going into October as well. I don't have a problem like one week before Thanksgiving to the beginning of January, but I don't, I don't really like doing it in October or in January. I think it's, like Mark said, it's too long of a span.
What do you think? November 15th to.
November 18th, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. The 25th is Small Business Saturday. And then through, the last day being either December 30th or January 6th.
Yeah, last year went through December 31st, yes, as an end date.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever you decide, I have no problem.
I mean, that's what, that's what other communities.
You also have the option for the merchants that, for example, you could do one days, they have the bags. For example, if they were to say, I don't know when Valentine's Day falls this year. But maybe if there was an event or a bag that would coincide with Valentine's Day, you could approve that Saturday, period.
Absolutely.
Right.
So you could cherry pick some of the others, which we have done in the past. Right, address Mark's concern, because I have a big concern about that.
Yeah.
When we did that once before, the merchants couldn't park.
Right.
Some of the businesses came to us and said, change it, get rid of it because my people don't have a place to park.
Yeah, that's why I would rather just see it like the other communities live, it's eat town. They all do the same thing. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, done. If there's a onesie twosie here and there, you know, by all means, come and ask us for that one week, but I mean, that's just kind of, anyone else's thoughts?
I think that's a good idea.
Thanksgiving through Christmas, okay. And if we want another, let's say another day, that something special is done and on like on a Saturday, how much time do we need in advance to approach the council?
Six months.
No, I probably take two months at least. Because that's the same, what do we do for, what do we do for special events?
Well, special events, I see that a little different.
Well, right, but that's what I'm saying, I mean, you gotta have a little bit of.
I mean, special events, if it's a large one like the craft fair or.
Yeah.
We usually want to be six months ahead to start planning, getting ready, getting council and let people know. I think that's a different beast. If there's a special event coming up on a Saturday, I think a few weeks ahead of time, let people know that, hey, it's gonna be this, this is communication now, it's probably good.
Councilperson Stall, any thoughts?
I like the idea of going from the end of October to middle of November, just for the end of the year.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Fisher?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that.
All right, are we gonna vote on this this evening? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion that we declare free parking on Saturdays from November 18th, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving, through December 30th? Sorry. All right, I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stall.
No, she said 30th.
The 30th is a Saturday, so that's why I said 30th, yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at, Alan, there's mine. So I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stall, to declare free parking on Saturdays from November 18th, 2023, to December 30th, 2023. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, there's free parking Saturday.
All right, well, thank you. For those of you, we appreciate it from the Merchants Association. We live in this community, some of you work in this community, some of you just come to play in this community, which is wonderful. So we're only here to grow this community. We meet a lot of wonderful people, not just putting up, setting up shop here, we're buying homes here and they're a big part in loving what's happening, the movement that's happening, so thank you, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much for your consideration and I hope we provided a little bit of comedy relief. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have. We have considered authorization to hire Chad Binder up as a full-time community service aide. This is to replace Rich Strom. Rich Strom. Oh, wait, we're not, I didn't answer, I guess we are motioning. And we have a motion by councilperson regard and a second by councilperson Price to authorize staff to hire Chad Binder up as a full-time community service aide. Did you want to add anything to this, Chief?
Just that he is an excellent applicant. The mayor can tell you, he happened to wander into our interview and was able to meet Mr. Binder up within the five minutes or so that he had spoken to him. He was pretty impressed as were we. He has a great background, he checks most of our boxes. So we're excited. Honestly, we're gonna miss Rich Strom. He is a tremendous asset, but we have high expectations for Chad.
I actually worked with Chad when he was starting out his career and he was a security guard for Commonwealth Security. And I worked because I was a dispatcher in Central Station.
So would you concur, would we let you know?
Remembering, I mean, this is like the. We had some fun.
Mr. Binder up will come to us, he's retired from, a 20-year retiree from the State Department. And three, help me chief, three, his last three or five years, he was, he worked in.
Community policing, yes.
Community policing. So we see that his, it wasn't, it didn't take long to see that his knowledge of the computer systems that we use, like coding and stuff, is going to be very beneficial to helping, not only be a community service person, but help in our IT, work with our officers. And also, I think he will probably work as Rich Strom did so annually, be a good mentor to some of the new officers we have coming on. Because they always have those questions.
Any questions, comments or concerns from council? At council still? No? Frank?
Sorry, I couldn't hear everything you might have said with the question that I had. Has he been there as a part-timer or just a new hire?
This is a new hire.
This is a new hire to replace a person that's leaving.
Okay, and at what salary?
It's about $24 an hour.
And for the, one last call, questions, comments, concerns? There are none, I have a motion by councilperson regard, second by councilperson Price to authorize staff to hire Chad Binder up as a full-time community service aide. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, we are asked to consider to hire Daniel Imler as a part-time patrol officer. This is wonderful that we were able to find another part-timer because that is not busy as things.
This is a very sharp young man, like his military background, but he wants to work here. He understands that we're busy. He understands that he's going to get a tremendous amount of experience here. So we, we're excited about the opportunity.
Does, yes, Frank?
Does part-timers get more than regular wage? Paid under part-time?
The rate of pay is $26 an hour.
So.
That's much less.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we want to act on this this evening? See, we're in the moment, yeah. Would anyone like to make a motion to, no, all right. I have a motion by councilperson Lindner, second by councilperson Price, authorize staff to hire Daniel Imler as a part-time patrol officer. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Staff reports, comments and announcements, Solicitor Gable.
I don't have anything additionally this evening other than that we will get those ordinances advertised and we'll get that taken care of.
Orbits.
The ordinance, yes. And we also have to get the, another advertisement, we'll be, we're good, so thank you.
All right, engineer is not here. Eric, this is your chance to speak.
One chance, yeah.
Secretary Treasurer, Mr. Steigerz.
Thank you. Just a few items tonight. One, we were successful in closing Old Davenport Avenue property that's now owned by the borough. We have gone through and looked at it. Jake is getting out there now to clean up some of the overgrowth and the weeds. We are gonna be contracting with a fence company to get the property secured, locked down. And we had an initial meeting with a design build firm to start getting quotes and hard numbers on and looking at improvements to the building. So he'll get all that back to you as soon as possible and keep that property moving forward. Second, I just want to do a quick reminder, with the rains we've had recently, it's a big help to all of us, especially in public works. If people just take a few minutes, if you see, if you know rain is coming, go out, you know, sweep up, clean up a little bit. Keep the draft, the trash and debris from getting down into the gutters on rain, before a big rain hits. And if you can, look at the storm inlet of your property. If it's blocked, cluttered, you know, take a minute and clean it out. It helps us a lot. Like you two were saying, you know, it's our community, we all work together and that's something little that we can all do to kind of help out and keep an eye on the borough. I'll say this again and keep saying it. If the street sweeper doesn't run, the trash in the gutter is not the fault of the street sweeper. It's the fault of the people throwing it in the gutter. So when we run the, run the street sweeper, like I said it once slowly, be happy. It's all of us to keep our town and community clean. Let's take the time, one, don't throw trash in the gutter, it's not an easy cleanup way. Two, if you see it and you're able to and you're safe, you know, pick it up, you know, help keep this town nice. We receive a lot of comments about how people love to come to Columbia and how it's such a beautiful community. We want to keep it that way and I think it's something that we can all, we can all work together to help out with, you know? Let's all join together and keep this place looking as good as we are, as proud of it, if that makes sense. Finally, this week, the County Planning Commission did review and approved, recommend approval of our comprehensive plan, which is a huge step in getting everything in, done and buttoned up. So we will have that coming forward at the 26th meeting where council will take final action on. And I just want to, again, just thank everyone who's worked hard on getting that documented to this stage. It's a big lift, there's a lot of work to get it there and I think it's something we can all be proud of, so look for that the next week. Thank you.
Upcoming meetings, Harv is on the 13th, which is tomorrow. Harps and Rec is on Thursday, the 14th. Planning Commission meets on the 19th, which is next Tuesday. And the Shapetree Commission meets on the 25th. Also, I will add, CCAT meets tomorrow evening here at 5:00 PM. No, 5:30. 5:30, I'm sorry, 5:30. Tomorrow, 5:30. In your packet, you also have approved minutes from LASSO and the Planning Commission. We have borough council comments, we'll start with councilperson regard.
Sure, thanks. You know, it's really easy to criticize things when they're not going so well. And it's really a whole lot easier to kind of not recognize things when they are going. I want to thank Mr. Dautrich for the compliments to 462. sixty-two. It's good. It's probably the only compliment I ever want to hear.
It was due.
It was due, right? But how many, how many complaints have we heard since, since it was a wreck, right? I think of Walnut Street as an example. I drive up and down Walnut Street all the time, not thinking anything of it. But boy, I never think a lot of them was a bad shit, right? So going back to our communications discussion from earlier, the other communications issue about inter-borough communications, and I wanted to give a shout out, want to give some accolades. Want to share an incident that I witnessed where the system worked in action and it worked perfectly and I was so impressed and so happy. I was on the phone with Borough Manager Fivers the other day and I was outside pacing up and down the sidewalk as we were talking and I heard sirens in the distance. Not thinking a whole lot of it, and we're talking. A few minutes later, I hear Jack come in his office over the phone, Chief Bromer, say, Mark, there's an incident, gas leak, potential gas leak down on Second Street, I think it was. And Mark said, got to go. A minute later, bing, text my gov. The system works. And that's how it was intended to work. And when it needs to work, the ball doesn't get dropped too often. So I just wanted to call you guys out and say thank you for making it work.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was scary.
And just a note on that, Jake Martyr happened to be just stopping by, just to check in and get some stuff. And Jack grabbed him right away, got him involved. We actually went over to the Market House. Chris was there. We opened the Market House up for those who had to be evacuated from the area. Communication got out very quickly and within five minutes of us getting the Market House open, a few residents came, came walking in. So it was, the system as a whole, all worked together as well.
So we'll link it here. Councilperson Fisher, next. Councilperson Kaufman.
Back to the Second Street incident. Mark, you said that at the end of the day, you explained that about the delay. Please explain.
Oh, explain again, sure. So the result of this incident was because of a discovery we made where the UGI gas lines were actually drilled through the curbing. And as the, the company was indemnifying, demolishing the curbing, they, they cracked one of the service lines in. Everything was stopped. We've now discovered that there's more of those that occur in there. And so the contractor has pulled out for probably two weeks, Jake, right? And so UGI can come in and locate all these service lines and then relocate them if necessary so that we're not going to run into this in the future. And then the curb can be properly set once we go forward. So it is going to delay the project about two weeks while they get this fixed.
So everybody knows.
Yep.
Thank you.
Still ready, still ready to bridge, but still two weeks.
But at least we'll see progress, we'll see an app and end mark as it's going. Councilperson like, aye, we just got through the same thing I was saying. So my governor and I appreciate getting that news. I wonder if I spent, I think we orchestrated that. Councilperson Price?
I just want to thank the Highway Department. I did a rotten bomb on the street sweeper. And Mark said a lot of others. But people, if you could get out and pick up your trash, use the cans, it helps a lot.
Hey, Councilperson Stahl?
Just remember to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel so we can get live meetings up and going.
And while I was looking, and I believe there may have been change in policy, we may not need a thousand now, but I'm not sure. So once we get that situation fixed, we may be able to get up and running, live streaming sooner than, rather than later. I want to remind everyone, next Thursday starts the budget meetings. The budget, what's it called? The, from PSAB, the budget bulletin.
Budget bulletin.
The budget bulletin was released already. If anyone would like it, I downloaded it a little while so you don't get a password to get in if you'd like to see that. Also last week, there was a webinar on millage and taxation. I did that again because it was a nice review. So there's that. And if anyone is looking for something tomorrow, there is a webinar on updates to the Open Records Act, which is always nice to hear those updates as well. Because all I had, an announcement of next meeting at 7:00 PM on Saturday. On September twenty-sixth, 2023, council will hold a regular meeting. Oh, and speaking of Saturday, bread stand will be opening at the market.
On, on the, on the bottom.
Been watching their things and their breads look amazing. So go get bread on Saturday. Tonight, as stated earlier, we will be adjourning to an executive session to discuss personnel matters. But I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Price to adjourn at 8:35 PM. All in favor?